Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Janet Dance.
Here.
Trustee Pearson. Not here. Clerk reads my here. Supervisor Crane.
Here.
We have a quorum. Jan, I'm sorry, Jan Dill, any treasurer?
Here.
Okay. For the, for not to have a quorum.
Board member conflict of interest statements.
I have none.
I will not be able to vote on the bills because I own property in phase two.
Mr. Odenwald, do we have any extra batteries? This one apparently just broke.
Sorry for the delay, folks. We've got to fix this, this thing.
Kim Pearson, are you here?
Cousins.
While Jan's doing that, I have a community announcement. We just learned late this afternoon. The EPA has given us preliminary approval to proceed, board, with applying to use the $1 million Congressional Pier mark for Phase One and Phase Two at the plant so we can restore, restore the original plan to have, you know, the chemical storage building and all the other things that we had to cut out. And we probably will be able to do some additional changes recommended by the, or additions recommended by the engineer that if a Phase Three occurs, the plant may, will be more ready at a lower cost. So I've been trying to get EPA for three and a half months to do it, and I was about ready to go ahead and do it anyway. So having said that, because of that, I am moving, since we have all five members here for a special meeting, I move that we add an agenda item number seven, sewers.
I support that.
Supported by Kim.
So we're moving public comment, board comments.
Yes.
During the gentleman.
Right, eight, nine, and 10.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd also like to amend number four to read, "Treasure Report and Board Discussion on Financial Management." Is there a second?
I will second that.
Jan seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
No, I don't suppose I went aye. I was just late.
Voice word by the chair.
Yes.
So first of all, I want to start out by thanking all of you for giving up the beginning of your weekend for this very important meeting. I've been a public service servant most of my life, even when I was in business. I served in the military reserves and as a city planning commissioner. And I truly believe, and I have learned, that all taxpayers not only deserve good government, but most importantly, they need to know how their government is performing so they can have trust and confidence in the institutions that serve them. I have called this special meeting tonight because I am very concerned about recent allegations via email chains by former clerk Don Webb saying that the township is missing $400,000 and that the police department is missing over $20,000. Could you change the slide, Ron? I'm also concerned about allegations in this, in this recent postcard, which I'll hold up for you. In this recent postcard about a number of financial management issues concerning bank accounts and financial records. All of this activity implies criminality. I take any allegation, large or small, concerning misappropriation, fraud and abuse, malfeasance, misfeasance, I take them very seriously. Again, that is the purpose of this meeting tonight. I can assure you that this board will get to the bottom of these allegations. And if further action is required, I am confident this board will do what is ever necessary to fix it. But before we get into these issues, I want to introduce our staff. To my right is Chief Gordon Temple. And, and we all know Chief Temple. Next to him is our contractor, Daniel Rampinsky from ProNexus LLC. Dan, extremely knowledgeable, very helpful. He is a CPA, Certified Public Accountant. He is a Certified Fraud Examiner. He is a Certified Financial Fraud Examiner with a bachelor's degree in accounting and business from Wayne State and a Master of Science in Finance from Walsh. Next to him is our administrative assistant, my battle buddy on the budget, Chris Green, who has a master's degree in organizational development and decades of accounting experience. When I talked to the head of ProNexus, he made it very clear to me that we are very lucky to have Chris Green and her accounting experience. And he actually said that he's never seen someone at local government with this type of experience and knowledge. And then next to her is our deputy supervisor, Ron Odenwald. As moderator, I'm suspending the rules to allow a free flow of discussion between board members and staff, much like a workshop, but it doesn't involve the public. For members of the public, I ask that you refrain from interrupting and engaging in cross-talk. There will be no tolerance if interrupted. You will be escorted from this room. As always, you will have a chance to speak during public comment. I ask board members and staff to stick to the facts. By answering questions of other board members and staff, I will give each board member an opportunity to ask questions. I think this is the best format to proceed. Again, I consider this an extremely serious matter. Our taxpayers deserve accountability. Let's start with the allegation that the township is missing $400,000. So for Chris, Dan, and Jan, starting with Jan, are we missing $400,000?
While I do not carry a currently active CPA license, I still operate under those professional standards. And those standards and my responsibility as a fiduciary agent for this township would require that if I knew about or was concerned that there might be any money missing, certainly a money in that amount that would cause a material misstatement of the financial position of this township, I would be obligated to bring it to the attention of this board immediately. So the answer to your question is no.
Okay, Chris?
In the past records, we can see that back in August of 2022, cash over and short had $223,000 in it. That's kind of exceptional. And April 2023, there was $100,000 sitting in cash over and short. And we've never been able to figure out what happened to the $70,611.75 for Eagles Nest, which came into the books in 2018 and still sitting on the books. Then Jan and I have looked at Eagles Nest a couple times. We put it off to the side because it is so complicated to figure out what happened when we don't have a ledger. And that's that part.
And not, just to finish that thought, I did communicate with the auditors when they began the field work about the cash over and short account as with $100,000 balance when I walked in the door, into the treasurer's office on May 23 of last year.
So you've been in office 14 months?
Yes.
Okay. Dan, do you have it?
So, Chris, just repeat the date again that the cash over in short was absent, or shows a balance of $223,000?
August 31, 2022.
Move your mic down a little bit. Move your mic closer to you. So I guess I'd like to ask Chris and Dan, I don't understand the over and short. That seems to be a huge amount of money. That should be, shouldn't that be extremely low?
Yes. You know, it should be a hundred or 10 cents here, $5 there, nothing in $100,000.
Not anything over, and not material, but I would expect something in the neighborhood with the amount of money that we collect and run through all of the accounts. The cash over in short, we never exceed $500 in the course of a year. That would be my benchmark.
Okay, Dan, I know it's possible, it's possible in any way, shape, or form, you know, to misappropriate or steal $400,000, but where's the money? Are we missing $400,000?
As of today, when we're doing a reconciliation of all the accounts, because my job is to come up with a baseline so that we can get through the audit at June 24, and you'll have books clean enough to keep going forward. But the answer to your question, no, there isn't. To our knowledge, as of today, could not find any indication of $400,000 missing from, on the books.
Would you recommend the township do a forensic audit? Or is that a waste of money?
It's, well, you're asking a person who is a forensic auditor, so I would say, no, it's not a waste of money. But at this time, I don't know if it's needed because we've got the bank recs all the way through.
Bank reconciliations.
Reconciliations all the way through May of 2024, and nothing has stuck out and glared out that $400,000 is gone.
Now, I would like.
I'd be glad to do one if you'd like.
Dan, Dan, in your experience, have you ever seen auditors close the books and finish an audit without having the bank recs done?
No, never. So that's the other thing is the.
Thank you.
You received an audit opinion last year, and that was, would have came out then. If not, then the problem rests with the auditors.
Okay, I thank you for that. Now, I'll relinquish my speech or my questions with one more question. I would like Chris and Dan to address why we brought Dan in, what were the reasonings from Chris's point of view with your experience, and Dan and Jan can time in at any time.
When I did the audit last year, it was my first year being a lead person on it. I've had 14 or 15 years of lead experience for audits. I was here six weeks when we started audit process. I kept finding problems, and I kept finding things I didn't understand. So I talked to the current auditor, which was hired by the prior administration, and he told us a lot of what is being questioned is out of the scope for an audit. There are two options here that I know of. The township can bring in another firm to assist with preparing the financial information for the audit, or the township can send us what you have as backups, and we can look into this. However, I mentioned, this is out of the scope of the audit. So then I went to the CPA that I worked with about eight years ago when I was called in and started working for a company because the person going out was unhappy and dumped the ledger, and we had to rebuild the ledger. So when I talked to her, she said, it is hard for CPAs when there's a lot of bookkeeping corrections during the audit. Government auditing standards require we independent to perform the audit. The more bookkeeping we do, the less independent we become because we are not allowed to audit our own work. Jan and I talked about it. Could we solve the issues? Yes. Did we want to come to the taxpayers and say, oh, we have to make entries probably close to $10 to $15 million in these books? And we didn't think the taxpayers would believe us, and we didn't think they should. We needed somebody from the outside. So then we started calling around and talking to different counties.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
That's fine.
Didn't we have someone?
Neil.
Neil, he retired, well, he didn't retire, he went back to work full-time, so he wasn't available.
Oh, I see. So that's how we came up with ProNexus.
Yep, we called around, we talked to Shebwaigan, we talked to another firm in Traverse City, we talked to somebody in Saginaw, Clare, Elpena, and the responses were pretty much the same. We don't have time at this point in time to help you. We would love to. Some had no responses at all, and one of them referred me to ProNexus. And that's how we ended up with Dan.
Do you have any comments, Dan?
No, I'm glad to be here.
Thank you.
Glad to be here.
Well, we appreciate you giving up part of your weekend. I'll, I'll turn it over to the treasurer.
I just have one question. So Neil was the one that was hired by the prior administration? Is who you are?
I didn't work for this, so I don't.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure.
And Neil, Neil, very competent, very helpful, very knowledgeable, but honestly, there, and I said this, you've all heard me say this, as in the treasurer's report over the last year, there are a lot of things that need to be addressed. And those things, getting to the bottom of how we got here and what we need to do to fix it takes an incredible amount of time. I spent the entire month of December and into January fixing payrolls so that employees could get their W2s on time and making sure that the payroll tax returns, some of which amended four and five times, were correctly filed, accurately filed, answering correspondence. And I was happy to do it as Jay's deputy, but to walk into the treasurer's office, keep that ship running, process payments, do all of that with two hours of cross-training and no documentation, and fix this is beyond the scope of time that I have. I have to be here 100 hours a week, and I'm not nearly as knowledgeable about this system as Dan is. And Neil couldn't be here to do it either. So, and I got to tell you, the CPA world has changed dramatically. People my age that are CPAs are retiring at a record rate, and young people don't want to take the tasks. So when you need the help of a CPA and you find one, you better play nice because they get to pick the work that they want to do these days. And, you know, I think this is a great time to thank Dan for, for the time and energy, particularly for him being here tonight. I mean, this is the nicest Friday night so far this summer, and I'm, I'm just mortified that we're all sitting here talking about this.
Well, Jan, you mentioned only happened two hours. Isn't it true that there was no email?
Yeah, I would say not. There, all of the email wasn't gone, but most of the email is gone. There's, there was not a single checklist, not a single calendar, not a single shred of a starting list for me to start, except for the files, right? Except for the files that recorded the transactions. And, you know, I've had this conversation with Buffy because, you know, I've had the.
Well, who, just to be clear, who didn't leave these files for you to have?
The former treasurer.
Okay.
The former treasurer did not leave. So I've had this conversation with Buffy at the county because I haven't always met her expectations.
Who's Buffy?
Buffy is the county treasurer.
Okay.
And in that conversation, Buffy has weighed in on what I found here and the way that things were left and said, well, I would never leave a position. I asked her, I said, so what do you think? And she said, well, I would never leave a position that way because it's extremely unprofessional. But that's what we got. And it's not the first time I walked into a job where I had to figure things out as I went along, and I'm happy to do it. But to be accused of this level of malfeasance, and I've told you all, look, you want to come at me, I'll take you on. We can talk about facts, but when you start besmirching the reputation of the people who are employed here and didn't sign up for this, that's another story altogether. For Gordon to have to give up his Friday night and a trip up north because of childish, unsubstantiated, they're not even allegations. There's not enough meat there for them to be allegations. They're nearly rumors for you to give up your trip up north this weekend. To be here for this is just, it's deplorable.
Well, let's just keep sticking to the facts. Do you have any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Because we talked about reconciliations, and we've been charged or challenged or intimidated with the fact that we haven't done reconciliations for two years. Can somebody answer that question?
When I handed Dan the books to kind of look at the bank reconciliations, most of them were through February and some of them were through January.
Right.
Previous.
So it wasn't two years, it was catch-up on this year in order to complete things for the audit at the end of this year.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right. And so I just want to make everybody aware of the fact that this was an unsubstantiated challenge, had no idea where it came from.
I, I want to take one topic at a time, so I really would like to stick with this $20,000 business.
Okay.
So questions about the $20,000, and any answers you can provide would be helpful.
Is this to the police department?
No, this is, I'm sorry, not 20,000, the 400,000. Hey, Ron, could you go to that email that says $400,000 is missing? I think it's the next one.
Yeah, that's.
Right there.
$400,000 missing in the books. WTH.
So if you're talking about the revenue sharing checks, they were entered into the books on July 7th. They will be accrued back to the 2023-2024 year. If you're talking about the $266,657.65, it is in the general ledger, account number This is due to general fund.
I have a question. When you accrue back, is that a normal activity?
Turn your mic.
It is for the modified accounting system that you're on. Nobody's observed it here, but I found some records in 1999, and I was looking for some data yesterday, and back then, Malmester said, yes, that's the way the accounting should be done for this company.
Well, here's a question I have. I mean, we've gone to great lengths, this board, in changing the entire policy to have this transparency so any citizen can go on the website and look at the bills and the checks that were written. And then we do this revenue and expenditure report, but isn't that a lagging report? Would that cause people to misunderstand anything?
It could. I mean, the auditors have given me the list for the audit. There's, I think, 58 questions on it, and they do not expect the answers until September 27th or 29th of this year. So I have until that point in time to do my accrues, my prepaid, and everything else that needs to be done in the books.
So the only thing I would add to that is, is that in the past, there are certain transactions that are not, not easy to anticipate. So Gordon writes, sorry, Gordon, I'm going to poke his ear. He knows what I'm talking about. So the library gets a check in August for penal funds. We have traditionally accrued those back because they're really due for the prior fiscal year, but we won't know the amount until the check comes in. I haven't found anybody that can tell me how to calculate it yet. It varies, it's a per capita payment, and it varies anywhere from $3 to $6 per person, and it comes in early August. So instead of just guessing the number, we could do it a couple of ways. We could just take a swag and hope that we get the right number and accrue what we think is reasonable, or we could just wait till the check comes in and accrue it back.
And we're also waiting for the bill from Navinoy's to pay me. We have not that yet.
That's correct, yes. So there, accruing and prepaid's are just, are serial for accounts, right? We do that all the time.
Right, so I'd like to go.
Ron, I'm sorry, but could you reread your statement again that, for the account in the email?
For revenue sharing, it was 103,000 to 103,145.00. That was received on July 2nd. And then for the ledger one is 266657.65, and that's in the general ledger account
Okay, so before we leave this $400,000, I'm asking.
This is related to the 400,000?
Yeah.
How does that add up? Is that part of the 400,000?
Yes. I mean, that's 369,000 of it. I believe that they used the budget amount when they figured their 400,000, and we know budget amounts. We try to hit them, but we don't always hit them.
Well, and I think part of this is a, although we've said this in the past, we have accelerated reporting, we have increased, we have decreased the lag between when these transactions happen and when we actually report. So when I first got involved 10 years ago, the only time I saw financial statements was when the auditor's report came out and at the end of the year for budget seizing. So we try to get the financials out as best as we can in time for the meeting, and because the meeting happens on the first Tuesday of the month, the books are not tight. They're just not.
And that's why we moved the meeting.
Well, yes.
To the second Tuesday.
And so what you're looking at is draft financial statements based on the best information we have on Wednesday before the meeting that happens on the first of the month. So in very many cases, the month hasn't even ended when we're creating these financial statements and including them in the board package. And I apologize, but I would, that they're not, they're not the financial statements for the month, but we can, if I could anticipate what's going to happen in the last three days of the month financially in any organization I ever worked with before, I'd be retired by now. But I'm not that person, so.
But they're not perfect information, is what you're saying?
No, and I, we put speed and a head of accuracy.
But rather than wait for perfect information, we're trying to update the community on where we are with our spending.
Exactly.
I really like the check register because everybody can see what I get paid, what you get paid, what you get paid. Every check we're writing to every person.
How many employees we have?
Yeah. Trustee Pearson, do you have any questions for the group about this $20,000?
400,000.
400,000, sorry. I keep looking at Chief Temple, thinking 20,000.
They have a white door over there, Bob.
Yeah, I can't see it.
I mean, the question basically that I was going to ask, you know, has already been asked, but this was not, this is something that was done prior to this board, the way that they kept the records? Is that why this question is coming about? I mean, like the mystery?
The email they sent is showing our expense and revenue report from April.
Yeah.
And we're talking about figures to the end of June.
So Chris, can we talk about some of the other things that aren't on the books? Like, we sold some property this year, right? The revenue came in. Typically, when you sell an asset, not only are you booking revenue from that asset, but you're figuring out what the gain is based on your historical cost for that property. That comes from where?
The books. The first thing Dan said, the very first day he was here, he said, how can you sell property when you don't have it on the books to sell it?
That's correct. There, there are no, there are no assets on the books. The fixed asset schedule is entirely separate from the accounting system. I've never seen it.
Say that again.
So we're.
I mean, it's serious. There's, you can't balance the accounts if you don't have something to balance it against.
Correct.
If you don't keep track of your assets, then how do you balance an account?
Well, and more than that.
Other than assets were there, except for the sewers.
Right, and more than that, if you, if you're not keeping track of the assets in the accounting system, when something disappears, when something gets sold, it's, there's, it's just not how we do things. It's just not how we do things.
Okay.
Right? I don't know how, I don't know how this has been overlooked for so long. It boggles my mind, but here we are, and we're trying to fix it. And I feel like there are people in this community that are trying to penalize us for fixing it, and that's not fair to the people who are working their butts off to fix it.
They don't like penalizing us, but criticizing us for bringing in experts that can help us get to the root cause of these problems, then we can then find the right accounting that's. methodology to be able to get the books up to speed.
All right, let's try to stick to facts. I'll turn it over to Trustee Vance, if you have any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. Can you explain, whether it's Jan or someone on the panel here, about some of the other issues you're finding that maybe go back a ways, is causing problems now because it's coming up?
But, but within the realm of the 400,000? We're on that topic.
Oh, I thought we were past.
No, we're on that topic still.
All right, well, I guess this is something other than the topic of 400,000.
Do you have any questions for anyone on the 400,000?
No.
Deputy Supervisor Odenwald, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, so again, true or false, are we missing 400,000 in your professional opinion, Dan?
We can say together, no!
No!
No, thank you very much.
I do have one question.
Yes.
When do you expect that we might have the books cleaned up to reflect that we're not missing this 400,000?
Dan and I have set an aggressive deadline of trying to get the books in line to give them to the auditors with that September 27th or 29th date, for that they will have those informations to include on their audit, so they will have, we will have their blessings when we're finished.
Oh, wait a minute here, now I got another question. This is going how far back that you're cleaning up?
Yeah.
How many years?
Well, we don't have anything good to go back to, so.
What, what, what do you mean?
Yeah, when BSNA was loaded, it was not loaded properly.
When was that?
2018.
Okay.
2018.
2018.
The first BSNA was.
And we have issues there on documentation from BSNA stating that it wasn't, and asking us to go back to the last corrupt, which we can't find. I was, I think from what I've heard from a few people, you used to be on Peach Street, I can't find it anywhere, cannot find any documentation.
So what you're telling me, that this is not an event, is it true that this just didn't happen in the 14 months that the Treasurer's been in office? This goes back seven, eight years?
Well, and let's not forget that the sewer district that currently exists, the amortization to the people in that district was inaccurately calculated from the beginning and only fixed in 2022.
Well, it's still not fixed.
And it's still not fixed, yes, thank you.
Okay, so, does the board have any other comments or questions concerning this 400,000?
I have a comment, I have a question on what was just stated. Chris, are you telling us that you're having difficulty finding a clean book to go back to as a reference point to move forward now, and how far back are you looking?
We went all the way back to when you went to BSNA in 2018. Jan found these unusual entries that are booked in the records to hit November 6th, 6012, 6,012. There's already records in BSNA to hit. This one's at least balanced for debit and credit, and there's another one, July 28th, 2039. Debits and credits do balance on that one. This entry is July 28th, 2039. The debits are 6,692.57, and the credits are 31,431.81.
So wait, like, who's responsible for that?
Whoever was, whoever did the conversion in this office back in 2018.
So would that have been the clerk, or would that have been the Treasurer?
I don't know how they divided it up. Where I've worked, I've been the one in charge.
But I think the important takeaway, if I hear it correctly, is the reason that you brought Dan in in the first place is that you recognize this issue way back, and that we want to make things better than we found it, so for the next team that comes in here, everything is straight. Is that correct?
And Dan or Chris can answer this. Normally, when these kind of transactions happen, how do accountants find them? How do we find these errors?
We're looking for something else, we've run across them, or in your case, you happen to actually find this and say, what's this? And we went to BSNA and talked to them, and their questions were, do you still have access to your old computer system? If so, are we able to search for these two items?
So Chris, did you find any work papers or any other accounting product that showed a regular analysis of any of the things that are infected by those transactions?
No, could not find it, and as you know, I spent months in the basement looking for them, and I cleaned up the basement. A lot of the records, or some of the records were destroyed because they were used as sponges to mop up the water. The bookcases were collapsing on us as we were trying to find records. Books were stacked four and five tall, non-labeled boxes. Oh, somebody's bread, whoever put their bread in the basement for your time capsule, it was moldy, and it was still soft.
But I just want to make it clear.
That was beautiful.
I want to make it clear to the community and the taxpayers. What I'm hearing is that this accusation of 400,000 missing is totally false. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yes.
Thank you, Dan.
And I wanted to mention that I'd really like Chris and Dan and Jan to talk about, you've got to have a good baseline in order to do reconciliations. If the baseline's wrong or is out of balance, you can never get things balanced. Is that true or false?
I'm loath to use the word now, but it certainly does make it far more of a challenge. It makes it more time consuming, and sometimes, you know, when you're cleaning something up, you need people who have higher level skills than the people who made the mistake.
So you can always complete the reconciliation, but it'll have an out of balance condition that you're always searching to find out, where did that come from?
Well, I think, you know, if you want to talk about cost benefit, Dan, but.
I'm just open to you suggesting.
You know, if it's a 20 dollar error, you're not going to spend 2,000 man hours trying to fix a 20 dollar error.
Right.
You make an adjustment, you move on.
Yeah, our objective is, when we say a baseline, every balance sheet account should have a reconciliation that's substantiated. Differences called unreconciled differences, we have to clean them up and get rid of them because you don't want to be carrying that forever. So that's what our objective is, get a baseline where every balance sheet account is supported, every dollar is supported, with a reconciliation and support.
So, so for example?
So when you say they're supported, there's a, there's a bank account that matches with your accounting, is that correct?
Correct, there's, in other words, there's evidence, for example, you have automobiles on your, on your books, you have an invoice that you paid for these automobiles, and the information on your books is substantiated with corroborating evidence, either an invoice, bank statements, so that you can go forward and feel comfortable that your numbers are accurate.
Like the Eagle's Nest receivable for 70,000?
Yeah, stuff like that you can't support, you have to deal with it and say, we have to eliminate it somehow because you don't want to be carrying that in forever.
So just to clarify what that is, we've got 70,000 on the books, but we've got no cash to reconcile it with, is that correct?
I've seen that happen. I suspect, my suspicion is, is that we collected money, but it didn't get appropriately recorded in the system, and I believe that came over from the old system, and when it came over in 2018, it was, it was wrong then, and we, you know, we were just kicking the can down the road. We don't know how to fix it, so we're just going to, we're just going to leave it there. And, you know, Chris and I have been committed to the idea of cleaning this up so that we don't have these errors. You know, one error, and you're ignoring that error, and you're ignoring this error, and you're ignoring another error, and then pretty soon the books are meaningless, and nobody's, nobody's really paying attention. You don't have a baseline to measure other things against. It messes up the budgeting process, it, it just makes life difficult in general. But, you know, I don't really know why that receivable's still sitting there, because we can't go back to those books and figure out what exactly happened.
Another reason.
But we know it's zero now, so it's got to, we got to make the adjustment. So now you've got this receivable sitting on this side of the ledger, and, and the ledger's got to stay balanced, so now I'm going to credit this and make that zero. All right, now where does that debit go? I still, I can't just do a one-sided entry. That monk that invented this system, he was genius, it's always got to balance, and if you start cleaning things up without understanding how you got here, you just make a bigger mess. And that's, that's how it just got started with cash over in short. I got 100,000 balance, I know that's not right, I can, I can just relieve that account, but where do I relieve it to? And now you're just chasing your tail, making a bigger mess, Chris is here all day cursing under her breath that Jan must have made some journal entries on Saturday, because now these accounts are right, but these are wrong. Like, that's not fair to do that to the rest of the accounting staff. And that's, you know, why I appreciate Dan coming in and being willing to, you know, really dig into how we got here so we can get it fixed. Because that's the fair thing to do for the, the taxpayers deserve to have clean books, and the next person sitting in any of these seats deserves to have something to work with that's, that's not a big mess.
Well, I do want to commend Jan and Dan and Chris for taking this on, because as you know, as we get farther along with this sewer project, we're going to be subject to single audit, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's a tough one, is it not?
Well, think about the funding for this, we've got, we've got Eagle giving us money, we've got the USDA giving us money, we've got the federal government giving us money.
EPA.
And the EPA, and all of those organizations are serious about making sure that the taxpayer dollars are not misused, so.
She means they're probably accounted for?
Yes.
It is, so before we leave this, I just want to ask everyone at these tables, is there anything we can do in the future to prevent misinformation or misunderstanding of information? You know, I certainly am not in favor of not providing the information to the public.
I think you ask a question before you put it out in the world, or you'll never get it down now, it's out on the internet, it's there to stay for life.
Yep. Okay, any other comments on this? So we'll move to the next one, if you could go to the previous.
I just want to ask one thing to Dan. Dan, do you have any suggestions how this could be handled in a professional manner for our township? I mean, I know we're, we're small, you know, compared to Shboygan, this is a Shboygan or Shire La Boy or whatever, but, you know, you deal with these kind of things all the time. How do you deal with this?
Our objective is, by the time we finish our engagement, to give you a list of recommendations.
Dan, if you had to put an estimate on the dollar amount of total adjustments that need to be made right now, what would you say it would be?
10 to 15 million, we talked about?
Yes.
10 to 15 million dollars that we've talked about.
Thank you.
In adjustments?
In terms of adjustments.
Just in terms of adjustments, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you're missing your assets on the books, you're not, you don't, it's weird. You have a loan on the books for the sewer plant, but you don't have the loan on the books for Chibwa Beach Prospect, you don't show a loan on the books for the streetscape, yet you show a loan on the books for the sewer.
And you don't show it as an asset?
Well, actually, the sewer has been looked as an asset.
Okay.
And, you know, the land shows up for the sewer plant, the building shows up for the sewer plant, but you don't have any other buildings.
There's a lack of consistency in public. Fund accounting, governmental accounting, you have an election, you can treat the assets as a fund, or you can expense them as incurred, but the problem with that is, in the future, if you want to track it or if you sell it, you want to know exactly what you sold. So we're going to make a proposal that we're going to treat the assets as a fund and put the assets on the books, so the public can see what assets we own, and if something, the asset is sold, it will be recognized.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is it true that the auditors estimate the number of assets that we have?
Yes, they do have a list. Gordon's trailer, the old S-track by your insurance company, is a patrol car, and that's the way it's been, you've been paying insurance on it since whenever he put it on the books, probably.
So someplace there's a list of assets, but it's not in the books where it belongs?
Correct. Gordon has no patrol cars on the books.
And so all of this was done before the prior administration? This stuff that you're trying to clean up, Dan, was done before?
Well, we've noticed 2018, when the new system was brought on board, there was, as we call in the profession, rocks. In other words, balances amounts that you cannot substantiate, and no one knows why it's there. So there's some, yes.
Okay, I'd like to move on to this issue that you can see on the screen, where, and Chief Temple, I apologize, personally apologize that you have to be here tonight, I know you had other plans, but I'm very concerned about supposedly 22 or whatever that is missing, and now I understand there's another $100,000 missing? Did you want to address that and maybe ask questions of our staff and our consultant?
Well, this is the first time I'm hearing about the $100,000 missing, but.
Was it through something this morning?
As far as the $22,000 from the school resource officer, I have provided, everybody's got a packet in front of them, you'll see, I actually submitted bills to the school on November 8th, February 2nd, and May 21st. Next to each one of those is also the check showing that the school reimbursed those three bills. I know that the first one and the second one have been entered, and I think what's, the confusion is, is on my revenue side for the last check that was, came in in June, June 17th, 2024, for 25,451.46. It is not showing yet on the revenue side under 207000676-01. Typically, that would be showing up at the next, in the next board packet, so I've actually been kind of waiting to see it in August.
And that's the way we normally operate, Chris?
Yes, it is.
So there's that 30-day lag, Chief?
So really, the dollar amount though is in 25,451.46.
Okay, but we're not missing any 25,000?
No, I've got the checks and the receipts.
Okay.
You sure?
I'm sure. Do you have any comment on any of this, Chris or Dan?
No.
Any further questions from the board?
I just like to say one thing, I've been working, I've had the pleasure of working with Gordon for a little bit now, and I think we have a good working relationship, and Gordon has, I don't think I've seen anything get by you. He puts the budget together, pays attention to the numbers, and to suggest that he would allow 20,000 to just go missing is, is just an amazing allegation to make. It's almost funny if it wasn't so annoying.
How many times have I been up there saying, this is not my bill, I'm not paying for it?
And how many times have you come and said, hey, can you run me this report?
And I would agree with Jan, because we both interact with Gordon, and it's nothing but very professional, and he exceeds any expectations we could possibly come up with in terms of running our office or our township at this point in time.
I've done budgets.
We're trying to catch up.
I've done budgets at the federal level that are far greater than the entire township, and what Chief Temple has submitted to me has been excellent, especially during this last budget cycle. I mean, I thought he was an accountant, so I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Supervisor Odenwald to address the next issue.
Well, I, I almost feel the need to apologize for engaging in this, but.
Yeah.
Where do you want to go?
I suppose it's.
It's up.
It's up.
Where at, where are we going?
There. There.
Ian, I, I almost really need to apologize for engaging with this stuff online because I'm, I think I'm above this, and I think all of us are above it. But, you know, you can FOIA things, you can come to conclusions about things, and at the end of the day, it doesn't mean that you're right. It just means that you have an opinion. And, you know, some people's opinion is based on decades of experience, on multiple certifications, on multiple tests, and, 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 and other people's opinions are, are just their opinions. So, you know, the, the damage that can be done by this, you know, we need to look at the big picture. And the big picture is that a week ago, two, well, three days ago, you know, we made some progress with the county and the commercial rehabilitation district. A week prior, or two weeks prior on the attempt, we closed on the loans for Phase 1 and 2. And when we engage in hyperbole like this, the damage that can be done to the community, the questions that can be raised unnecessarily, and, and questions are fine, and we encourage questions, but we encourage questions based on fact and based on understanding. And when the question demonstrates the lack of understanding, you know, the, the fact that we're, and, and as Supervisor Kramer said, the fact that we're all here, you know, the elected officials, and, and again, I have a thick skin, I don't care, I, I truly don't. Call me what you will, think of me what you will, never been my, believe me, never been my issue. Not, not, not an, not an issue for me whatsoever, ask my lawyer. But we have employee, and, and I'm not an employee here, but we have employees that show up every day, that give their best, that give far more than what we ever expected out of what we pay. And even though we've made compensation adjustments, we're still getting the deal of the century. And, you know, the things that have gone on here are not giving anybody warm fuzzies, and they're not encouraging growth, they're not encouraging development, they're not making people beat down our door to take care, or to take advantage of the MEPC offerings that we just put in place three days ago. You know, there's between sixty and a hundred million dollars of commercial development happening in this township right now, this minute as we speak. How much commercial development was there in the last twelve years?
None.
None?
None.
Okay, can we go down to this one? Who wants to start? Jan? Well, here, I'll ask the first question. Where is the money? The township bank accounts have not been reconciled for almost two years, and the books are not balanced. According to this place out of Lansing, Michigan, Listen to American Citizens, which our attorney research, it's called, that's a DVA for Southeast Michigan First Incorporated. So I want to ask the treasurer and anybody else wants to, township, is it true that the township bank accounts have not been reconciled for two years and the books are not balanced? Yes or no? Short answer first.
I would say that that is, that is patently untrue.
Okay, could you elaborate?
Well, the, I, I walked into an office in May where the bank recs had been not, had been started but not completed for six months.
Really?
And, and I came here, and I told the people in this township that that was the case.
I remember that.
And I've updated people as we've gone along. Because, look, if you've got a thin skin and you can't own your mistakes, you won't last in accounting very long because you can't execute this job perfectly, just can't. Accounting systems are not designed to be perfect. They're designed to, to efficiently communicate financial transactions and to find mistakes and correct them quickly. So the goal isn't to, to make sure that everything's perfect, the goal is to make sure that the, the numbers reflect the financial position of the township and for us to have some oversight on the people who are working in the system. I, I've heard the allegations that, you know, the, the payroll here has exploded. In the past, we had two people, two people, that, that was the entire financial system here. You know, when you get dinged on an audit for segregation duties with people who are here working, you know, we've got somebody who processes AP, we've got Chris doing accounting, I'm doing the treasurer's job, Jay's doing the clerk's job, we've got four people working on the books. That means you find things faster, and you fix them faster, and you keep things running off the rails faster. And does that cost more money? Certainly, certainly it does. But the average embezzlement, last time I looked, takes a couple of years to find, and it's eighty thousand dollars. So, you know, and in addition to that, that the extra resources here are absolutely needed to make sure that we keep things on track. When, when I first started looking at AP, the only thing we recorded in AP was the vendor, the date, and the amount that we paid, and the invoice number. So if you're, if you're.
Workhouse bill, right?
Yes, so we're, sorry, thank you. If, if you're working on, in the DDA, and you want to see a general ledger of the DDA transactions, alls it said was, here's who we paid and how much we paid. Well, that, that doesn't tell you anything, right? If you're on the DDA board, you want to see more detail than that. And what I heard was, well, that takes too much time, Jan, I don't want to do that. So we're not doing that now. If we buy a ream of paper, it says a ream of paper. If it's just general office supplies, it says office supplies. If Doug Schofield is buying things from Carquest, and he wants to see what he spent last month, he can actually look at the general ledger and not have to pull sixty Carquest invoices to figure out what he spent money on last month. Those, those things take people, and those things take time. And, and if you're going to have an accounting system that actually provides data, I mean, you need that information.
Well, this goes back to what I've said at many meetings, we're not Mayberry RFD anymore, not with all these huge federal projects and these grants and these loans. It, it takes a lot of time. I mean, Jay, you've struggled with it?
Oh, absolutely, I want to be clear here, accounts payable, every single invoice, so Doug buys twenty cents worth of nuts and bolts at Carquest, or a couple bucks for this, or a couple bucks for that, every single invoice goes into the, or into our accounts payable. We basically scan it into the system so that you can actually retrieve it and reprint it and, or summarize it, or, not to mention the total amount that we're actually writing a check.
Isn't that, didn't you buy that module recently?
No.
No, that's another module, that's cash receipting.
Oh, okay, okay. So I want to get back to this township bank accounts have not been reconciled for almost two years. How do you do an audit if the bank recs aren't correct? Chris, Dan?
The auditors wouldn't start the audit if they couldn't provide the bank recs.
They have to be done.
So the auditors wouldn't even proceed with the audit last year?
They wouldn't finish it, they would, it would be, it would stall the audit.
Well, in the, in the case of Gavidge, they wouldn't start the good work without the, without the bank recs, that's their policy. And, you know, the, the irony here is, is that that, that, that document that you have was published with a, with someone who wants, wants the treasurer's job, says that she has an accounting background and doesn't know that. And that's, that's a standard.
Trustee Pearson, do you have any questions on this subject?
No.
Trustee Vance?
Yeah, I have a question about, well, maybe a comment, I'm not sure which, about what you brought up about the wages exploding in the office. Well, let's make this really clear. Dan is instead of Neo, and we had Neo all along for several years. Chris is the administrative assistant, which we have previously paid the clerk an extra salary for being her own admin. So now we just have the admin be a different person, but that position has always been there.
But that was necessary because of segregation duties, correct?
Well, I, other than having the statutory requirement of a clerk, a deputy clerk, a treasurer, deputy treasurer, a supervisor, and, who am I missing, and the trustees, the other office staff is not required, but the more people that you have, the more oversight you have, the quicker you find mistakes, and the less likelihood you have that people are working together. The legal term is collusion, to take advantage of the system.
Well, my point is that these positions have always been there for Dan and Chris, it just wasn't with these particular people. And, and then also.
Not, not always, there was one clerk who basically didn't, didn't have herself paid as an admin, but there were two other clerks that did.
Yes, in the past, yes.
And I was not paid as an admin, but I was doing admin work initially until we were able to hire somebody who's qualified like Chris to do this job.
Right.
But your point is true.
Yes.
For the most part.
For the most part.
We've had the administration, John Description, if you remember, on the table for the last, I'm going to guess, ten years.
Right. The other point I want to make is that during the annual meeting, I gave the, the report from the township about the infrastructure and all the improvements that were being made. It took me over eighteen minutes to read the improvements that have been done to this township through the help of everybody here and volunteers. Took me eighteen minutes to read the list in one year. Those are the improvements as it happened in this township. And yes, it was the cause of this board, and I'm not patting myself on the back, but we spearheaded the volunteers and, and the different people throughout that helped dramatically for that. We couldn't have done it without extra help. And we've had four elections, or will have by November, four elections in this one calendar year, and with a, with a.
More, more if you count the early voting elections.
Exactly.
Which we participated in February, we're not participating this time, we may or may not have participated.
And the voter roll was a mess, and we had to pay people to help us clean it up. So these are all things that have been deferred for years and years and years that we finally said, let's get things done.
Well, God bless Cindy Wymer for all the hard work.
Yes, thank you for that. So that doesn't happen by little fairies coming out of the duckwork at night and working on the books and working here and there. That happens with real people either volunteering or being paid to do jobs that this township needs to be done. Like Bob says, we are not Mayberry anymore, we have to step up our game because too many things have been deferred for too many years. So that's just my input on the wages.
But despite the raise in labor, we still finished 2024 fiscal year under our balanced budget.
Twenty-three fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, under budget, yes. And we have to pay them a wage that's comparable to their work. I mean, yes, Chris gets a good salary, Dan gets a good salary, so does the chief get a good salary, our police officers get a good salary, they're not going to work for free, they're not going to work for ten dollars an hour, they're not. So we have to pay comparable wages as well. So yes, wages exploded, if you can call it that, but there's good reason for that. And you, as taxpayers, have benefited from that.
The other thing you need to realize is that you're coming in under a balanced budget, the first one in thirty years, not an inflated budget that had a twenty-five percent slob factor in it.
Right.
So the meaning of this, of these numbers is far more real than any budget you've seen in prior years.
And in fact, God bless Parks, despite everything they did, that, they had a very reduced budget, instead of fifty or fifty-five percent, it was down to twenty-eight percent, and they were so good, Doug and the Parks Commission was so good that we noticed that they were underspent.
Yep, they came in under.
For the fiscal year.
Yep.
About, I think it was eight, ten, twelve thousand dollars.
We hired an extra person and gave people raises.
Yeah, we hired extra people and gave, gave people raises. So, in other words, instead of just having them, I think it was June, July, and August, he started having people April through October, I believe, is that right, Rob?
So I want to use an example here to amplify your point. We were past board, well, first of all, it wasn't even authorized to basically purchase Ponem software, but nonetheless, it was reconciled, and we purchased the Ponem software. Then we asked for volunteers who'd be willing to do the work of, of improving the books between the MasterCards and the Ponem software and the cemetery. And that person happened to be Jan Dilahay, who got the job. But nobody ever gave Jan Dilahay the permission to actually use the Ponem software and do the, the work that was necessary to get that job done. So what happened? It didn't get done, but yet we had the Ponem software. And we had two versions of it, or two licenses, but we only needed one. So the bottom line is, that takes someone some time to actually go in and do that work. So we actually had to pay somebody to come in and make sure that we, we were able to take all the MasterCard records, which are paper records, and get them into the Ponem software, and then find out where our shortcomings were. We still have work to do to make sure that all the unsold lots are properly identified so that we don't sell somebody a lot that already has a burial in place. So there's still work to be done, and we made big improvements. So what's the moral of the story? You don't get work done for free. Somebody has to actually do real work to move it from a paper system to a computer system, and then validate all that, all that is correct. And I'm sorry, but it takes extra people to do that. Now, why didn't it get done before? I don't know.
But we were still under budget.
Yes.
So I want to move to the next one. Turn your mic off if you're not speaking.
It's your mic.
I think it's your hearing aid, or when you turn your head toward the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Bob.
Well, I can either be deaf or.
Or weak. I notice when you turn your head and your hearing is at.
Oh, well, thank you.
Next to the microphone.
Yeah, because it's Bluetooth.
Yeah.
So let's go to the next one. This, this mess says, "Tell Lori Smith this issue needs immediate attention to ensure transparency and accountability in our financial management." I think we've made huge strides in transparency and accountability. I'd like to know from staff what they think about this, and not only are we doing it, but what could we do better, if anything? Chris?
Pay attention to what you sign. You, you, back in 2014, when you took out the sewer, you signed that federally, starting with April 1st, 2014, you had transferred two thousand six hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents into the RRI account. That's a requirement of the USDA. It hasn't been done till just recently. I just found the documentation, well, a couple months ago. Actually, we're talking to Aaron at the Performance Engineering. Those are simple things to do, and they just haven't been done.
Well, and, and I, to jump in a little here, if you look at the sewer billing, inconsistent. If you look at the hangar owners getting billed, it, it's all over the map. We didn't get bills out. So Chris spearheaded getting miscellaneous receivables installed, those bills can happen on a regular basis, we can keep track of those receivables, we don't have to have a separate work paper to do that, we can tie the subsidiary ledger of the detail that each hangar owner owns to the trial balance. This is what accountants like to see.
What about the trailer park fees?
You're just a half a step ahead of me. We got a letter from the county, the trailer park fees, so if you have a trailer park, you owe, the township owes collecting a fee per trailer per month to the county and the state. It's a three dollar per unit fee, we send off two dollars and fifty cents per unit per month, and we get to keep a WAP and fifty cents. No documentation, no history of having done that, and.
For how many years?
Five years. Pure lines on the county telling us we owe the money, and I don't have the ability to look. look back and find out whether we just, we, we could have just sent a check. We could have made the choice to just send a check to the county saying, "Here's the fees that, that we owe, and move on." But now those trailer park owners get an invoice that says, "This is what you owe, and this is what we expect you to pay." And we send it to the county. And that, that entire process now runs like clockwork. The, the hangar owners, it, we had to find all the contracts. We had to get them set up in the system. Um, all of that takes time. And again, Chris, Chris is a hot commodity. If, if Chris wants to leave, she could have another job before she hit that front door. And to create a workplace where, um, there are, continue to be unsubstantial, unsubstantiated rumors that she's not doing the job correctly, I don't know why she'd put up with it. I don't know why she would.
I don't know why she stays.
I have a comment on that.
I'd like to make a comment on that before you do, if you would. Um, yes, I agree with everything Jan said, so I'm not gonna repeat it. But if I was out there in the community, the one thing I'd be asking for, what do we need to do to get, uh, consistency and constancy throughout, uh, the office environment? You've shared with us all these problems, and you, you've fixed these problems, and not all of them, but most of them, a number of them. What do we need to do? What we need to have consistency in the office staff. It shouldn't be politicized. If Chris was here, she'd be able to meet a new board and be able to explain to that board how all these things work, why they work that way, what they need to do, what she's gonna do. But no, what do we, what do we have? We have them creating allegations and showing disrespect to those that are working hard to fix problems and get things done. And I find that just abhorrent. And the people that are doing that ought to be ashamed of themselves.
Amen to that.
And all of this takes time and energy. You know, where, where I, Emma, are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All of this takes time and energy away from creating things like standard work papers that would be a roadmap for anybody who came after to, to understand that we worked through the trial balance and proved out the balances, and we know that those balances are correct. It takes time and energy away from, you know, where, where I work during the day, I have an eight-page Excel document about everything that has to be done, who does it, and it gets signed off on to close the books for the month. We don't have that here yet. We started it, but, but if we're doing this, we're not doing that. We can't, we, you know, this is just, this is just a silly waste of time.
Can I redirect for a second? You talked about the trailer parks. Can you, in, in a similar brief fashion, can you talk about the personal property taxes as well?
Oh, sure. Personal property taxes. I have lists and lists of personal property taxes that are uncollected. Uh, personal property tax is a tax that is assessed to business owners with more than roughly eighty thousand dollars' worth of assets. Um, they, they have to fill out a report in February each year and, and turn that into the assessor. The county sends the form out. The assessor then looks through it, calculates the tax, and the tax bills come twice a year, just like regular real estate taxes. The difference is, if we don't collect real estate taxes essentially in March, I, the treasurer settles up with the county, and the county buys those tax bills as receivables. And then the county uses, um, various tools to track people down. A lot of times, you know, we, we've got a stack back there this high of tax bills we sent out that never got delivered because we've got bad addresses. Another problem we're trying to get ahead of, right? So, the county goes through LexisNexis or whatever public records they have access to, so that they can update those bills, uh, the addresses, and get them sent out. And they have the authority to seize property, put a lien on the, the real estate in order to get those tax dollars collected. The county can't do that with personal tax, personal property tax. So, it's on the local treasurer to put notices out, uh, do things like, uh, get Gordon to go out with me and seize property, take money out of cash registers, all of those sorts of things. Now, for, for, for two years now, I've been chided to get after it because the only township in the county, the only place in the county with worst property tax, personal property tax collection records, is the city of Sheboygan. They want it cleaned up, the county wants it cleaned up, they don't want this stuff just hanging out there. So, we also have to find, where are these businesses located? Um, prior assessors didn't necessarily do a good job of collecting the physical address, and these parcels that are assigned for personal property tax are not assigned to the real property. They're assigned to the property, to the business owner. So, if the business owner closes the business, they still owe the tax, and maybe they move downstate. I gotta find them and figure out how to collect. I know that there is not a strong incentive for treasurers to collect this money because in the average year, there's thirty thousand dollars' worth of tax, and maybe a thousand or two of that belongs to the township, and the rest of it belongs to the other, other constituencies like the school district. So, they've been cheated, um, and...
The school?
Sure. The people that the, the property tax is owed to. And it's, and it, and it, most of it is not us. We just get the administrative fee. But, you know, again, it's another, it's another, um, system that needs attention. Uh, it needs to be, um, buttoned down, and processes need to be established so we can get those dollars collected and get that cleaned up. In some cases, the business is like, there's, there are some that have gone out of business, and at the point that they'll just age out because you can't just wait twenty years to collect, right? Um, but businesses go out of business on a regular basis, and if you're a treasurer trying to get ahead of the problem, you need to pay attention when you see the signs change and the, and the, you know, closed for remodeling on the restaurants, just a nice way of saying we're done, right? And, and the local treasurer has the ability to go in and say, "Okay, you owe us a hundred bucks, I'll take the podium." And take it with them, and sell it on, on the curb.
So, what I have heard in this segment is that we still have work to do.
We've got a lot of work to do, and that's, and, and that's why I would, uh, like to continue to work on it.
Yeah, so, so everything's, everything's not rosy, it's a work in progress.
Uh, it's not dire, but, no, it's not rosy.
Okay.
But what Jan was talking about is how we automate these receivables, in my opinion.
Right.
Um, we, we need to do that with Parks. Parks is trying to, uh, use the recreational facilities we have available in this township, and when not in use by residents, uh, make it available for, uh, baseball tournaments or other like events. We're not, I don't know that we're actually getting that money, you know, into our treasury. I don't know, because we just don't have the proper miscellaneous receivables in place. And we should be invoicing those baseball teams, for example, or food trucks, or whatever you want to think about.
And, and that's a communication issue, yep.
Yeah.
All right, so, so if we allow the others to ask questions.
Okay. Years past, um, the treasurer gave, like, a two-second, um, report every month. They would read the general fund and the taxable account, the balances. Two seconds, you're done. Now, we get a financial package every month. Um, how much time does that take to get that put together? I mean, it's not two seconds like it used to be, you know?
I, I don't, I don't actually put the packet together. I just...
Chris would.
I just work to make it happen.
How much time does that take? Put that together?
The whole, just the financial, just the financial side?
Yes, yes.
Probably the computers, now that I've done it several times, I can print the reports off in about fifteen minutes.
Okay.
And then what do you do with them?
Then we have to make the copies for the board packs, and you put it online.
So, so the benefit to the people is that they're getting more transparency, they're getting more accountability.
Yes.
And they know that we're being responsible with the money because they're seeing everything where the money goes. They see what we see. They get nothing different.
Part of, and Bob puts it on the line, online, and they can see it before you ever see it.
Well, I, I always try to put the board packets online before I send it to the trustees.
Yes.
We work for the public.
So, as far as transparency and accountability of our financial management, I think we're right on track. And I don't know how we can be more transparent. It's a whole lot more transparent than it was three years ago, five years ago, ten years ago.
Trustee Pearson, do you have any questions?
I would just, what...
Mike.
What do you think about this, Dan?
We're down the spot there, by the way.
Want to hear my comments? Here we go. Um, I think you need to step back and give yourself a pat on the back, I'll tell you why.
Could you say that again?
For example, we keep talking about what, what do we need to improve on. Well, the one thing you have to give yourself credit, you recognize you had an overload of work. And you said, "Okay, the most important thing in accounting, seriously, as easy as this is, is bank reconciliations. You want to make sure your balance, your bank account, no matter if you're selling cherries or if you're building automobiles." And you recognized that, and you brought in somebody that assisted. And, and so, going forward, I mean, i- if that's something you can't really absorb by yourself, then you bring in somebody one week a month or three days a month to do the bank reconciliations. But you, you recognized that need, and you brought people in before it was too late. Because, like, what we said, when somebody says the bank reconciliations haven't been done for two years, they were only three months behind. Okay? And they were started, so now they're getting close to being complete. And that's all I have to say, because I haven't been here that long, but that's what we've rec, what I recognize, and I give you credit for that. You could have ignored it and just kicked the can. You didn't.
Uh, Dan, can I thank you for that? But is there anything else further that we could do that we're not doing, uh, that the public might want to see?
Well, you're producing financial reports online for them. Um, you know, like I said, I, my job here is to get a baseline and move forward, and that's what you're, we're working towards. I think once we receive that, get that going, let the public know, and then, um, you get them published and move forward. Um, we will issue a report on recommendations or best practices before we depart. But at this time, I think it's a little bit premature to bring that forward. But I do, do want to let the public know, you did react when we, when you realized the bank reconciliations were behind, and that's critical.
So, one of the things I have asked Chris, and I think you, Dan, is, we want to get a, a list or a report, whatever it is, of all the things you've found, so that we can make that public, so that we can show, "Okay, this is what we found that was out of, out of balance online, uh, here's what we did to address it, and, uh, it's now there for the public to know that we have their best interests at heart in terms of getting these things in line." Any comments on that?
We will, we, we got that order this week, and before, like I said, we depart, we'll have that. We'll have a list of best practices, and we'll also have a list of the findings.
Okay, great.
And what, and what we did with the findings.
Because once we have that, I want to publish it.
Okay.
You know?
Um, our next item, yes, somebody else had something to say?
No, you just say good advantage.
Yeah. Um, this says, "Our treasurer must have clear, accurate financial records guaranteeing prompt payments for police, fire, schools, library, and county services." And I would like that addressed because there have been some issues, and we've talked about it openly in public.
So, I will say that, um, my first experience with the fire department was when Jay was out of town, and I was, uh, here in the office replacing him as his deputy. Um, I had a check on the desk for over eighty thousand dollars, no contract, uh, other than, you know, basically the amount that we agreed to pay the fire department. Nothing in the clerk's office to tell me what period we were paying for. Nothing. So, I then engaged the treasurer and asked him questions. And at the end of that discussion, basically, the answer was, "Sue took care of that." So, the clerk knew, but we didn't have any historical documents in the office to assure me that the eighty thousand dollars was actually due, um, other than the balance, uh, the liability sitting on the trial balance for the county. So, um, thankfully, we had Mr. Waldron come in subsequent to that to talk, uh, speak on behalf of the fire department, uh, and that's when we discovered that we've been paying the fire department in arrears. So, we collect the money, we send it off to them. When we collect next December, we will be paying them for services they've already rendered in this calendar year. Um, still haven't found a document in the office that tells me how we got to this place. Um, I, I have somewhere on my list of priorities, uh, the hope that we can sit down with the fire department and find a way to get them caught up and have a, uh, the, the last contract we were asked, asked to sign, uh, actually requires some work. Mr. Odenwald, is that true?
Two hundred and some thousand dollars, yeah.
Yes, but it has some things in it that don't make sense.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. There are, there, there are items that even our attorney said we need to address, just as far as the language, just because of how old the document is, it was prepared on a typewriter. So, we need, we just need for everybody's benefit, looking out for everyone's benefit, obviously, the fire department at the top of the list, we just need to clean up the language.
And how about the schools?
I will say that walking in and, and understanding that you have a trial balance that tells you that you have a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars in cash overdue and you're receiving and dispersing money from a tax account that has to balance to the penny with the county with no documentation, can I say that? Can y'all say it with me now? No documentation. Thank you very much. It's, it's a little intimidating, and I said here, and I will say it again, you can, you can have it done quickly, or you can have it done accurately. Sometimes you can have both. But once that money is out of the tax account, you can't get it back, so you want to make sure it's right. In addition to that, there was no, there's no record of where the actual money for the school district would get sent. So, I had to send two emails and wait for email response about where the check should be sent. Um, I've heard subsequent to that, that the, that the school district, uh, just, you know, they were upset, and I, and I have apologized for them, for making them upset. That, that's totally on me. But, um, I promise you, there are labels and envelopes in my office now and a written document that says, "Here's how the money gets dispersed, and here's who it gets dispersed to."
Well, didn't you have to hand-deliver a check?
Well, we offered to hand-deliver a check, but when we got there, there was no one available to receive the check, and that was Mr. Odenwald.
Okay. Any, uh, other questions from board members? All right, I'd like to move on to the other one that I don't understand. Focusing on county bank accounts consistently. What is a county bank account? Do we have bank accounts with the county? I'm, I'm dumb when it comes to this stuff.
We have nineteen bank accounts. None of them say anything about county. They all say, like, sewer, DDA, library.
Okay, successfully completing county audits. I didn't know we had county audits.
The only thing I can think of that might be considered a county audit was the problem with the trailer tax.
So, so we don't have county audits?
The only thing I deal with, with the county is the trailer tax.
But that's not an audit?
No.
Okay. Okay. So...
Sounds like a little bit of knowledge was dangerous, this was done.
Um, to finish this up, uh, why the township spent... Citizens, can we go to the next?
Going up or down?
Down. Uh, there's the guy running away with the money.
That you, Bob?
Yeah.
Stayed alive.
Oh, last warning. Um, citizens need to know where the money is and why the township spent thousands of taxpayers' dollars to hire an outside firm to do the job. Taxpayers need answers. So, have we answered that question? I think you addressed that.
I think so.
Is there any comments from the board?
Yes. Just remember, we've always had an outside person helping us with the books, his name was Neil. He's been here consistently for several years. He switched jobs, so we had to find someone else. We were lucky enough to find Dan, but we've always had someone in that position to have outside eyes on our books, on our problems that we can solve, so things aren't pushed under the rug or deferred to someone else. So, that's why we have Dan.
So, why didn't Neil find some of his stuff?
He did find a lot.
He did find a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. He answered a lot of questions, especially for Jay when he first came in.
Well, I mean, he was never, while I was here, he was never hired to come in and do some sort of forensic audit. He simply was here to address our questions, make sure we were approaching our auditing properly for capital accounts, for how we handle the sewer transactions.
Helped us with BSNA.
For the chart of accounts that we had to switch over from, from one year to the next once a, once the, yeah, the renumbering that was done by the treasury.
The state.
I'm sorry, well, the state treasury.
Yeah.
Okay, so before we move on to the grant agreement, is there any other questions or comments?
Well, I just feel like so much stuff from the previous administration was double running out, was swept underneath the carpet, basically. And it's all coming to light.
Intentionally or not?
Intentionally or not. Some of the comments that I've seen in this email from Don, I'm not quite sure if they're intentional or not, but.
Well, be that as it may.
Be that as it may. Some of these people are running for office that have done this and I just, it scares me of what direction our township is going.
Well, let's stick to the facts.
So in the interest of fairness, I'd like to make a closing comment and we can get on number eight, number seven or number eight. In the interest of fairness, a 501(c)(4) is not controlled by the candidate. As a matter of fact, if it's administered properly, the candidate should have no input as to what's being said. And the public needs to know that. How else? If it were me, if it were me and my picture and my name were on a document and there was something in that document that was false, I would say so. I would disallow those comments and I would do my best to separate myself from that 501(c)(4). That's just me.
You've got a lot of integrity as a person.
All right, so let's move on to the grant agreement. Do we have the grant agreement? We did not get it?
Yes.
It's in the packet.
Yep.
Boarding Grant Purchasing Agreement.
Ron, I'll turn that over to you since you're on the building maintenance agreement.
As is the chief, but just very briefly to bring you up to speed. The $200,000 grant that we were successful in obtaining to use for all of the deferred maintenance on this building as well as improvements, we're getting to the point of where we can actually spend some of that money. We've gone through the bidding process with most of the items. There are still some to get cleaned up. We're waiting for the vendors to get back to us with some of the minutia of the detail, like for instance, their bids have to be hard signed. They have to have statements that they will comply with, because bacon prevailing wage. Those are the housekeeping items that we're waiting to fill out. But we've already got a vendor for the guards. We've already got a vendor for the cameras. We are very close to having a vendor for the waterproofing. We have an engineer that suggested that we do not pursue any physical repairs to the wall, that it's not as severe as we first thought. So instead of spending, you know, $40,000 on a fix, we're going to be spending 20 just on waterproofing and a soap pump. And that comes with a lifetime guarantee, by the way. So we are very close. We're, the lighting stuff is very close to being ordered. The camera stuff's very close to being ordered. Meeting with the camera vendor on Monday. The agreement in front of you right now is simply a very, very simple, couple-sentence document that says whatever entity of the thirds that manages building, the township offices, the library, the police department, whatever entity fronts the money gets reimbursed when the grant reimburses. That's all it said. And it's just to make sure that we are totally transparent, that there's a recent memorandum of understanding drafted and approved by the library board, by this board, and by the autonomous chief of police.
Okay. Board members, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Janet makes the motion. Is there a second?
To approve the grant agreement?
Yes, we accept the grant.
Just want to be clear. I'll support that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I will abstain from the bills since there are a number of bills in there for Phase Two. So I'll turn this over to Janet to get the bills approved.
All righty. Your next thing. The bills are in your packet and I'd like to entertain a motion to pay the bills.
I move that we approve the payment of these 18 invoices in the amount of $130,872.94.
I support that.
Kim supports. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Motion pass.
Okay, next item. Rather than just making a motion, I want to explain what I'm trying to do here. As the board knows, there is an application process. Even though the Congress of the United States has given us $1 million, when they gave us the $3.5 million, we're still required to meet all EPA guidelines. So we have to submit a package in grants.gov. And when Mike was here, Mike Ridley was here, this board decided that because of the complexity and the time, I couldn't do it, he didn't have the time to do it. So the board agreed to have NEMCOG make that application. I think that application on grants.gov cost us $7,000 and some change. So I would ask the board, and I will move, I will therefore move to authorize the supervisor to enter into a contract with NENCOG, NENCOG, for not more than $10,000 to apply for these funds. And I think that would do it. Is there a second?
I would support that.
For discussion, of course, that cost would be not borne by the taxpayer, but by the enterprise fund, those that will benefit from the sewer system. Any other comments?
Well, that $1 million is going to make sure that the plant is upgraded and improved to the point that we won't have to do that for many years to come. It's a blessing that they're allowing us to do this and it's a blessing that that $1 million from the EPA is even assigned to the township in the first place. So them letting us change the conditions of that money to be able to use it now for our plant expansion and upgrade that is going to be going on is really a big win for the township, so.
Well, you may recall that when we went through the plant design, we had to cut a lot of things out because of the high cost.
Yes.
And I'm hopeful that this will be able to restore that and then some. So if there is a Phase Three that ever comes about by the next board, that will reduce the cost and it will help with the efficiency of the commercial district and the two residential districts, so. Any other comments?
You said we're going to do grants.gov, is that right?
Yes.
Dot gov.
Dot gov.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public comment, please.
Okay, I'm going to talk loud because there's not a thing here. F. Don't start. F of 755, you ran a revenue and expenditure report and posted it online. It's under financials. Property taxes, you were supposed to have collected $286,000. You should have received $286,000 into the accounting system. It shows $5,000 as of 7/5. So that is incorrect because it has to be in the, it might be in the bank account, but it's not in the right bucket. State shared revenues, you were supposed to have collected roughly about $337,000. I checked the state's website. They concur, it's close. You have $177,000. It looks like Aprils and Junes have not been received in. So that is creating an incomplete record here. Also, the audit, we talked about the audit. The audit findings are in the back of the audit for 2023. You did get a material weakness, hit with a material weakness for not having the bank recs completed. And in it, it's the corrective action that Jay put together, said that you have received, reviewed and posted the necessary entries in order to properly reconcile them as of June 30th of 2023. That's done in December. They don't start the audit until September. We always do, and I did, and so did the previous clerk. Those journal entries are all done in December before the audit is sent to the state. This was included in that audit. Last, also on the 7/5 revenue and expenditure report was the police revenues that were missing the 20-plus thousand dollars. I did FOIA those documents. The only thing I didn't get was the receipt for July. This was July 5th. I think they were July 1st.
Go ahead.
So it's not showing up on the report. It's what?
Chief.
7/1.
7/1, so that should have showed up on the 7/5 report that he ran. It's real time and it's not. So you might want to check to see where you put the money because I'm not disagreeing that you didn't get the check, but it's not in the right bucket if it's not there right now.
Thank you. Board comment. I'm sorry, public comment. Go ahead. You're already a commissioner.
I just have a question. I took up your agenda and you guys added board discussion. So was treasure report done and I missed it? Or was the discussion about what you guys saw on that card and, I mean, I kind of felt this was not a productive meeting. I mean, you guys told us what you think you're going to do or should be done, but I don't know, I just, if you were going to do this board discussion, I think it should have been on your agenda because I think that's what your agenda was tonight, was this board discussion and not all this other, you know, the other stuff.
Thank you. Public comment.
Yes, my name's Patrick McGinnis and I appreciate the board taking the time to set the record straight. However, in setting the record straight, I'd like to remind the public that at least one board member has refused lie detector tests. At least two board members have lied to the police. At least two board members have participated in character assassination and another staff member even today commented that one of the people sitting in this audience drinks from the G-bottle until 2:30 in the morning. So if this board is such an honorable place, why don't you at least admit you lied to the police, all too upset or assassinate people's characters? Thank you for your time.
Board comment. I'm sorry, public comment. I apologize.
Bill Wekser, 6291, the Pike. For whatever it's worth, I, years ago, I used to be in the news business. I'd cover city councils and townships and school boards and I've never seen one that frankly is as open and honest as this. And I'm done with slanting and, I mean, it's crazy. And I was, actually, I think I called Bob when he redid the webpage. I couldn't believe how much was there. And I guess you can look at webpages of school boards and counties, townships, whatever. You don't see the financial information that this board's put out. So don't know everything, but I think damn well done. Thanks.
Bill, how do you spell your last name?
W-E-C-K.
W-E-C-K.
E-S-S-E-R.
E-S-S-E-R.
Probably when he was a journalist, journalists, they called him Bill the wrecker.
Bill West.
Bill West. Public comment, please.
I am a public count. Hello, my name is Mary Bauer. I'm the wife of our township clerk and I want people to know what has transpired since he decided to run for the township clerk position. It has been nothing but disgusting, terrible. And if we had to go back again, I would tell him he shouldn't do it. I've never heard so many lies told about my husband. I've never heard so many people call him up and accuse him of defunding the police, of bringing in outside people and getting rid of, and have everything outsourced. I mean, lie after lie after lie. And he gave his phone number out, even on election day. People were flipping the bird at him and the people that were out here at tables to ask, answer questions for him. I am disgusted with this town. I've never been treated or shown so much disrespect from so many people that are sitting right here in this room and know who you are. People have come into his office and demanded their income tax back, income tax back because they didn't like the fact that a road was being paid and wouldn't leave. And he had to call the police on this person.
Mary, your phone.
No.
Let me play the recording.
No.
I will play the recording for you.
Order.
And then on top of it, she went ahead and said that my husband called 911 and it caused tax dollar money. This board has been called cave dwellers. There's people in this room that are the cave dwellers. They want no change. They don't care about what's best for the town. They only care what they want and now they want to take it backwards. And I disrespect, Tuskorora Talks Back. It's nothing but a piece of terrible information. Every day, there's stuff on that that should be totally taken off because it does nothing but to divide these people. And I'm telling you right now, if I was any one of these people on this board, the reason they're not running again is because of the garbage you have thrown in their faces. And they do not deserve that respect. These are the most intelligent people that I have ever met that are on this board and they have worked so hard.
Your time's up. Thank you, Mary. Public comment. Any more public comment? Order over there. Do it again, you're gone.
This is unfair and you know what you can't.
Knock it off. Any more public comment? A little bit of levity. I told you I'm going to bring popcorn. Board comment. I'll start.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll start since y'all waited. This is a disgrace. This is a disgrace. This dark money, we call it dark money, is a disgrace. People, there's a limit of $1,050 to candidates. You can even find out who donates to a PAC. This was a planned event that cost tens of thousands of dollars by people who don't want to be named, who don't want you to know how much money they gave. who don't want you to know how much money they gave. And I've said it before on the radio. I've said it in my newsletter. I call on every one of these candidates, all five candidates. I call them the Indian River Squad. I call on the squad to knock this crap off. Everyone here is welcome. We're not going to keep people from coming into our township because you don't like outsiders. And this kind of literal libel slander, it's disgusting. And it's bad for business. It's bad for the school. It's bad for the community. And this crap with the police department is disgusting. This is one of the best law enforcement officers I've ever dealt with. And I've been doing this for 40 years, 40 years in government. This has to stop. You know, we can have a difference of opinion. We don't have to agree. But using an organization like this to hide who you are, you have to wonder, all five of the IR squad, right? If that's what you're going to do, and you're going to allow it, and you're not going to disavow it, what are you going to do when you get into office? I mean, my gosh, are we going to see a rollback of transparency? Are we going to have all this undercurrent? I'm really concerned about the township going back to the good old days. And it worked in the good old days. That's why the business was done. But in today's world, the distrust of government on the national level, this is why this board, starting with Jay Reitzma's courage to step up and run so we could have a government of rules, a policy book, that this board has been trying. I read an article from 1995 in The Resorder, where they were talking about a policy book. The MTA said we should always have a policy book. We have a policy book. I'm afraid that's going to go away, or it'll be ignored. But let me tell you something. If this board or new board, you know, does not continue on, they're going to find themselves in deep chemsky with the federal government. I can tell you right now, you know, and I'm getting a little emotional, so I'll just let it go. But again, I am calling on candidate Smith and candidate Fisher and candidate Hutchinson. Who else?
Maves.
Candidate Maves and candidate Decker. Come forward with whose funding this and how much. Be honest with your fellow citizens. That's all I have.
Okay. So I agree, we live in an age where the general public distrust the government. We also live in a state that rates awfully low on financial transparency overall. Michigan has gotten horrible grades for my entire life for this. So our standards are already pretty low. I came to board meetings for 10 years and asked for simple things like a treasurer's report that included all of the cash balances. Never happened. I asked for conflict of interest policy. It only happened after the USD mandated that we do it. And then, after we adopted it, we filed it in a drawer, and it was never brought up in a single meeting. Never brought up. There was never an opportunity. And then, when it was forced on the board, the very first meeting, one of the people on the board had a clear conflict of interest and argued with one of the people sitting in the audience about the conflict. So we don't have a very high bar. And all of this acrimony and dissension and unsubstantiated rumors, the rumor bill has been the problem here for a long time. I've met people in public who say, you know, this is a beautiful place, and we'd really like to retire here, but the people are mean. And so they don't. You don't even know how much these unfounded rumors are costing the township. We have a DDA district that has buildings that are empty, that has property that's undeveloped. And I'm going to say it again. We can either pay more as individuals. $60 million in development is $30 million in taxable value, and that's $70,000 to the police. If we ask the 3,000 people who own property here to come up with that $70,000, or we can have somebody who's developed an empty piece of land or a building that's going unused to help us pay and add to the taxable value of this township. Those are the two options. Either that, or we start cutting services back to do the only things that townships are required to do, run the elections, collect the taxes. That's it. So, yeah, well, somebody's got to figure out what the numbers are. I just build up. Yeah. So that's it. Is that what we want? We built this building, we got to take care of it. We got a police force, we got to take care of them. We made promises to them for years about the retirement, and all we did was watch the balance on that liability go up. We didn't keep our promises about making those payments, and here we are. And kudos to Gordon for helping the township get it paid down. I'm not here to make this my career. I'm here to fix things and turn it over to someone much younger than me so that they can carry the torch and make it happen going forward. But I don't like leaving messes for other people. And, you know, we could have come in here, and when we found the workers' comp bill with the $9,000 extra additional premium on it for failure to comply with the audit request. Right? We could have just said, okay, well, that's water under the bridge. Moved on and waited for the next audit to come up. But Janet was here, Chris was here, I was here. We were here on the weekends, pulling all that data together for two years so that we could go get part of that $20,000 back. And the question was asked in this room in an open meeting, why those insurance premiums went up so much? And we got told an absolute fib, an absolute fib.
I asked that question.
Yep, and you were not told the truth. And, and look, guys, I don't, I don't take this stuff personally, but don't beat me up for fixing stuff. And don't beat me up for working to get the taxpayers' money back and setting up processes. I've already heard people who serve here on boards say, you know, we never had to do this before. We never had to look at these bills before. They just got paid, right? Is that what the people who elect people to the Parks Commission expect? That Parks Commission just hopes that the township pays the bills accurately and in a timely manner? I don't think that's what they ask for. If that's all the Parks Commission's going to do is just pass the buck on the bills, what's Parks Commission doing? Right? And, and, you know, I heard from the DDA that if we continue to make them submit their stuff in a timely manner and follow a process, that they'll just take their checkbook and go do their own accounting. Well, guess what? That also means an accounting system, not cheap. It means somebody who's going to spend their time, not for free, keeping the books. It means another audit. And by the way, the DDA is subject to single audit. So there's another $5,000 that's going to go away every year. And if you're in the DDA, is that how you want your money spent? That doesn't benefit a single business owner in this township. So I, I just don't know how to say this in a different way, but this is just messed up, guys. This is just really messed up, and we're better than this. So let's knock it off.
All right, thanks, Jan. With the board's approval, I forgot one thing I wanted to say. I've never disclosed this before publicly. But I do want to tell you what happened in 2022, that we were required after the audit to have policies in place in order to get federal grants and loans. We had five material weaknesses, which was all policy. In addition to that, the board, by law, must approve all payroll. Okay, I found out. We never got to see it. So we don't know who's getting paid. I mean, it could be my brother, my sister, my wife. Who knows? We didn't know. I'm telling you now, swear to God, I had to spend $6,300 out of my pocket to hire a personal attorney to threaten to sue the township and the board to get them to follow the law. And Janet, you were in on that. I think you think, confirm it.
I was. And you were a member of the board, and you were suing the board.
And it wasn't until the final straw, where we gave Mr. Huth notice that if they did not comply, that I would spend an additional $10,000 to $15,000 of my own money to file what's known as a writ of mandamus with the circuit court. A writ of mandamus is a court order to force a public official to do their damn job or to stop abusing their discretion. And it's only then that we got the payroll, and we found discrepancies, and I'm not going to go into, in the assessor's office with that payroll that would have never come out, that had been going on since 2017.
And there was additional problems with the consultant.
Right. So the important thing is, had we not get, had, had, you know, our fiscal year ends at the end of June. Had we not forced this issue, we would have never gotten the policies put in place on time. And we didn't get the policies done until two weeks before the fiscal year. Now, if we hadn't have done that, we would have had a repeat of, and I think you know this kind of stuff, if we have a repeat of these deficiencies, then the state pays them. So this is the kind of, you know, old-school thinking that used to work in the old days that this entire board's trying to pick. So I'll shut up.
I have a public comment. Board comment, rather. It's about this flyer. And it's about some of these other flyers that we're getting as well. But this one in particular, it's a hit piece. It's what it is. It's ridiculous. I'll give you a minute. That's okay. It's a hit piece flyer. It's not only ridiculous, it's irresponsible, full of lies and innuendos. It was sent out on behalf of Laura Smith, who, according to the thing here, is not paid for or authorized by any candidate or candidate committee. It is paid for by the Listen to America Citizens of Lansing, Michigan. She's running for treasurer. The organization is Listen to America. It's a 501(c)(4) Democrat special interest group. We've researched it, with offices in Lansing and Detroit. The parent company of this is Southeast Michigan First, Inc. And this supports and funds Democrat candidates and initiatives. So the first question you should ask yourselves is why are these so-called Republicans getting campaign funding for expenditure mailing and advertisements from a Democrat special interest group? Running for a Republican, and you're getting Democrat help. Is it because they feel they need to masquerade as a Republican to get elected in Tuscorora? Or is it because they feel they will take money from anyone just to get elected? Make no mistake about it, the elites and the special interests are trying to buy this election. The least you can do is be honest about it. As you can see, Laura Smith has her name and photo all over this flyer. And she either needs to take full responsibility for the content, or she needs to tell the community who was feeding this crap to the special interest organization, because this is too specific for them just to make up a general flyer. If she is not in control of her own campaign, who is? Who is her puppet master? Because you can't run, because if you can't run your own campaign and be responsible for the message that is being sent out to your public, your friends, your relatives, your neighbors, how can you run the township if elected? The people need to ask themselves why this organization is dumping thousands of dollars into getting these specific candidates elected? What is going to be expected in return? This kind of money always comes with strings, always. And we all know it, you don't get something for nothing. And we, the public, need to know if they are selling out our township and at what cost. But it's not only Laura Smith. It's Trudy Mays, Lori Decker, Sue Fisher, and Jonathan Hutchinson, who have aligned themselves with this organization. Ironically, Trudy Mays wants to keep outsiders out, but goes to outsiders to fund her campaign literature. This group, or the squad, as Bob calls it, have allied themselves with people we do not know, nor would we probably agree with their politics or initiatives. Their zest, these candidates' zest for power seems to be at the detriment of their integrity, but that is on them. But I challenge anyone, anyone, who thinks these accusations are true, go to the authorities and make a complaint. Do it. It is your civic duty. It is your responsibility to protect your fellow citizens. And if you think someone may be guilty of misfeasance, malfeasance, or even criminal activity, you owe it to this community to make that complaint. Do it. Using lies and irresponsible inferences and redirect and to infer and accuse malign, defame not only members of this board, but hard-working employees is beyond the pale. And I'm mad. I'm very upset. And all because someone cannot properly read a financial report, and then they start these damn rumors. And yes, I said damn, because I'm mad. These damn rumors, and they're easy to start because we have people that are willing to spread it out on the internet and just create a firestorm, which is hard to put out. And that's why we are paying these people to be here tonight. It's costing you guys money to explain what's going on on these ridiculous flyers that are coming out. So I'm going to end this with my opinion. In my opinion, every one of you that has aligned themselves with this group needs to resign from this race out of disgrace to this community. And you have brought this on yourselves. Thank you for the comment. Oh, one more. Leadership talks, BS walks. Just saying.
Board comment.
I just want to say that a lot of the social media stuff has really divided our community. And it's very disappointing to read a lot of the comments on there. And I don't go on it very often. A couple of my friends have asked me questions about it, and I'll have to go on there and check it out and read it myself. And I'm very disappointed in the admins of the Tuscorora Trash, Tuscorora Talks Back. And that wasn't bad enough. Then they have the Indian River Flows and all this stuff. And it's just, it just makes me sick as a person who's lived here for over 60 years. And I see this going on because it wasn't like this before. You could agree to disagree. And I sit here and I look out at these people, a lot of you that I know, and I see you giggling, and I'm laughing and making little comments. And it's just so disheartening. And their integrity and character as a person, you know, I thought I knew you, but, you know, obviously, I don't. And I hope you can all show a better side and be a better person after tonight. And a little bit of knowledge, like I said, can be dangerous. If you think something is not right, you've got our phone numbers. Send us an email or call us before you start, you know, opening up a can of worms and giving our town a bad name. I hope that we can move forward on this and act as adults. And it's really disappointing to see a lot of the stuff going on. And it doesn't sit well with me. And I just can't be on this board with this going on constantly and being accused. I really sympathize with Mary because it's very difficult to get the lies and stuff that I hear and people calling me, you know, asking me questions, and it's not true. I mean, you know, we end up laughing about it, but, you know, it's very sad, but we have to come in here on a Friday night, and we have to call Dan in. And there's been mistakes that have happened. We don't know if it's been intentionally or if they didn't have the brains to do it or what, why they, the laziness, or why they didn't do what they did. But it happened. We found it. We found it. And we're trying to fix it. So at least give us credit for that. And I commend this board for all the things that we have had to work through. It's not been easy on us to work through it. And I've only been a part of it for just a little over a year. And I hope that we can make things right for this township because the people of the township deserve it. So thank you for coming, and I appreciate that.
I've got an election issue I wanted to review with people. But I also want to make a few comments, as the other board members did. Just for information, the ballot proposal, separate tax limitations to reset the milit rates, is very confusing. The best I can tell, after talking to Karen Rooster, having her information sent to me, and Buffy Jo Wildin, the county treasurer, and then researching it online to find out that it was our county commissioners that voted 7 to 0 to put that on there as it exists. Shall separate tax limitations be established for a period of four years, 2025 through 2028 inclusive, for the county of Sheboygan and townships and the intermediate school district within the county, the aggregate of which, as I see, is seven mills as follows. Five, seven, four mills for county, one mill for the townships, and COP, which I believe stands for Sheboygan, Cigo, and Presqueal. School districts, intermediate school district, .26 mills, for a total of seven mills. But it doesn't say how it impacts your taxes from today to tomorrow. The best I can tell, and people probably want to do their own research, is that if you're talking to Buffy, if you say yes, you basically are resetting things to a non-heavily agreement. And it's going to cost $7 per $100,000 of taxable value if you say yes. If you say no, you stay with the 2023 and the increase is zero. So that's, it's backwards. In other words, your intuition would say, I want to limit taxes, I'm voting yes, when actually they're raising the taxes. And you can thank your county commissioners, as far as I can tell, John Wallace hasn't called me back yet, to thank them for voting 7 to 0 for a tax increase.
The other thing that happens if you vote no is that it's a one-year deal. So they have to revisit this every year instead of having a reset.
Yes, thank you. Yep, yeah.
Just learned that yesterday.
This allows that if you vote yes, that basically you're voting yes for the next four years until they have to revisit it. Anyways, that's something you may want to know.
Thanks for bringing that up.
The other thing I wanted to mention, and I said it earlier, is that this community should want an independent, full-time professional administrative assistant with the requisite skills, the main continuity and consistency, and basic office services and offer effectiveness. And all of the deliverables that were responsible for as a, between Jan and myself, for the most part. The trustees have, or the supervisor has limited responsibilities. Trustees don't have any responsibilities other than to make sure we're doing our jobs properly. I'm not trying to, you know...
Well, that's why we only get paid $3,000 here.
Yeah, right. I'm not trying to be a little bit. I'm simply saying, in the larger scheme of things, the burden falls on Jan's and my shoulders. Things like payroll, accounting, audits, elections, sewer, and property tax cash receivables, credit cards, cemetery, payables, and recurring bills, purchasing grants, assets accounted for, which we just learned today that they're not, records retention, township policies. And then we even have to keep an eye on what's going on in the DDA and the library. One thing of interest, you know, one of the people running for elections here, the DDA hadn't done their tax incremental financing for three years. They had to be reminded by the Treasury, the Michigan State Treasury, that if they didn't do their tax incremental financing reports, that they're bound to lose their financing. What does that mean? That means the township has to pick it up.
$150,000.
Yeah.
How much?
It was $150,000, Lucian.
Of income that they received through tax incremental financing. So here, you have all these past, I'll say, government officials pontificating about what this board isn't doing or is doing, or doing right or doing wrong. But they're pontificating with all the negatives. And yet, they're the ones that are hiding all this crap that they aren't bringing up. Now, one of the things that Bob did, he admitted that we had to, how many months was it? Eight months, six months? Yeah, six to eight months to get one of the clerks to provide payroll. Why do you think they didn't want you to know about the payroll? Well, there's an excellent article in The Resorder from a year ago, at least, I can't remember exactly. Had to be a year and a half ago, that basically we found out a township official was being paid $30,000 plus over five years. Well, what does that mean? It means there was no board action whatsoever to justify that payment. What does that mean? It means that other boards clearly are transparent and there's evidence to that at point. Now, if you really wanted to pick on somebody, I would be picking on that past board, not this board. If you want a copy of this, come see me. I'll be glad to provide you a copy. And you can do with it what you want. Put it on Indian River flows or whatever you care to do. But clearly, we have an uphill battle here trying to communicate how we're trying to obviously correct the ship here. And we have people that basically was trying to bring the ship down, accusing us of things that they did. I just don't get it. It's hard for me to understand. I do want to thank all the people. Again, I couldn't do my job and I don't see how anybody else is going to be able to do their job without the help of people like Cindy Wine or Penny Pezzino, Chris Green, Jan Dilly, Amy, Randy, and then Karen Decker. We could not do the job we're doing without their help. And then you could have Bob and Janet that list along with numerous volunteers, including all the people that have volunteered to do elections with me. I couldn't do the elections without the, I'll say, the commitment from each and every one of them because they bring a wealth of experience to the table. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Any other board comment?
Yes, I may.
Yes.
We got more information yesterday from the Michigan Townships Association about that ballot proposal than we've heard anywhere else ever. And basically, what Jay stated is correct, that that is all about the county board of commissioners being able to kick the can for four years and not have to address this every year. So, you know, it's a heavily override. It, vote one way, it costs you money. Vote another way, you give your authority as a voter, you have to give that to the county board of commissioners. So it's almost a lose-lose. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for staying. At the end of the day, my reputation, be it as it may, remains intact. And I hold my head high to be associated with the fine people in this township and on this board. I apologize if I offended anyone by anything I said tonight. Mr. McGinnis, that was not my intention. Rodney King said, can't we all just get along?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
You make that motion, sir, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
For adjourn, thank you for coming.